And warrants reductions in the level of services that we're providing. So here's our budget development calendar. Right now, we're in February sixth meeting where we've introduced the budget. With approval tentatively scheduled for February twentieth. And then that gives us a week or so to get the budget ready to submit to the assembly by the first Monday in March. Hopefully, we can get into them a little bit early as the their introduction is on March fourth, the Monday is the third. So I'd like to give them a little bit of time to look at it as well if we can, but. And then we write then the assembly approves that there are two meetings in March. Then we're just waiting for the legislature to wrap up and see if we need to make any additional adjustments. So the budget development process we went through this year was fairly extensive. Kind of a piggyback from last year where we went through a lot of the details of all the different programs and how much they cost. This year, we went through more of a highlight, highlight those previous conversations. And then had the board guidance, went through a work session to determine what may be on or off the table as far as reductions. Looking at our different categories between administration, operations, maintenance, direct instruction and student supports. This is really just to provide a visual. Account of where our money goes. So when you're talking about cutting administration or cutting direct instruction, here's what that actually means. A lot of times when you talk about cutting administration. It's just this kind of nebulous term that says it's just admins, just people sitting behind desks, but. Those are the people running our payroll. Those are the people processing folks through HR. It's IT taking care of our equipment. As well as the superintendent and school board, the cost for those. So why we're in this, why we're in where the fiscal situation we are. Is really kind of depicted on this chart where those lighter blue bars are the base student allocation since FY seventeen. In that time, we've grown half a percent and we've been filling those gaps with either budget cuts in some years. Using Esser money, which was the federal stimulus package, the three different federal stimulus packages. A couple of years of state one-time money and more recently had the reliance on fund balance. That doesn't get us to where we need to be. As you can see, that gap between what's really an inflation proof BSA, which was that is the is the line and then the nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. BSA equivalent that we would be spending in fund balance. So as those two don't meet, we are having to make additional budget reductions to get down to a balance, to a balanced budget. So our upper number summary, you can see the overall decrease of about twenty million in the ASD managed funds. Primarily, it's the general fund going up a little bit based on infusion of fund balance. The project carryover, this is largely encumbrances that we carry forward. Most of it's actually charter schools, how they reserve their fund balance. And then we have ongoing projects through IT or maintenance. Just these kind of long-term curriculum purchase, things like that that really carry over through different fiscal years. We do have it for an upper limit authority through the municipality to add that in. It's not new money. It's just an accounting measure to be able to roll forward old money. The transportation fund is expected to go up by about a million dollars and grants is going down by about twenty-five. That's. Predominantly due to the Esser money going away in that, the federal, the federal stimulus as well as some other changes we have in grants. The debt service fund is based on the amount that we actually intend to pay on debt. So this does include an anticipated bond sale. But by and large, it's just as we've paid off debt over the years, the amount that we need for our debt service fund goes down. Capital projects fund, this is our non-bond funded project. So anything the voters didn't approve. Whether it's FEMA reimbursement, the state bond debt reimbursement, we put in the capital projects fund. So any local contributions go into that amount. So that's why you see like in the actuals. For FY twenty-one, it's only shows three million because that's only the local. It doesn't account for any bond funded projects. So that's kind of the requirement that we have for our upper limit spending for the through the municipality. Student nutrition increased by about two percent and then student activities is really. Those funds are generated by student groups for student groups. We don't really have a control over how those funds are spent. Typically, you know, they had a like in two thousand twenty-one, they had a spent a lot less because they weren't meeting due to COVID. Or raising money due to COVID. That's starting to get back up to historic levels where they're around seven or eight million. So we do preserve some upper limit authority for that. Then at the end, we add on our state on behalf pension payments. So total for all funds is about nine hundred and thirty-five million. About twenty-five million less than our upper limit from twenty-four. Now I'll turn it over to our senior director of office of management and budget Katie to go through the a few more slides.
All right, thank you. So you'll see you're very familiar with this slide. This is a slide that probably after a while, you know, gets old, but this really does drive our revenue. This is what drives the majority of our foundation. State entitlement payments is the foundation formula and the basis for this is obviously the BSA. But also our enrollment. So there's lots of discussion around enrollment across the state being in decline. And Anchorage is no different. We're experiencing that as well. But these do go through a series of the multipliers in order to give us our adjusted ADM, which is then multiplied by the BSA. To give us that basic need number. A couple of the things to note is we are projecting in this current revenue scenario. That are, we will experience a slight decline in our enrollment as has been the trend of the last few years. As well as a stable number of intensive need students, which is also a part of the formula funding. We in the current year experienced an increase in that number, and so we're just maintaining that in our revenue projection. So this provides the the numbers throughout the formula. You'll you'll see at the top that that gives us our adjusted ADM. That's multiplied to provide the basic need and then the basic need number is utilized to. Assess the local required contribution as well as the cap for the discretionary contribution from the municipality. It also includes a portion of the state reduction for our federal impact aid. And we'll talk a little bit about an adjustment there in the next slide. As well as factoring in the quality schools grant to be able to give us that total allowable tax number. So this provides a line item overview of our general fund revenue and this is the basis for. Our balanced budget and one thing that I want to point out is a few of the changes from the pro forma projected revenue. As part of the budget process, we do shore up these numbers to make sure that all of the available revenue is included and and make those adjustments as needed. You'll see for the preliminary budget number that's highlighted there in red. Is that reflects the increase as directed by the board to pull in fund balance to be able to balance the budget. Which has been adjusted moderately for making sure that we get to that number that we need. On the next line, the E-rate revenue, you'll notice that that has been removed from the budget. And that's because of a change in the contract to be able to provide us that. Those funds. So the way that the E-rate program works is a lot of times that that is submitted by the district. To receive reimbursement from the federal government for internet and phone services for districts. We have recently. Entered into an agreement where the the responsibility to recoup those funds is shifting. And so we will realize this though as savings in our expenditure side. So even though it's removed from the revenue side, it will show up in the expenditure side as a reduction. We also have increased the interest earnings by a few more million dollars to reflect. The actuals that we've been seeing with the rates being up and the interest earnings the district has received for FY twenty-three that continues to be. Over projected for FY twenty-four. We also have incorporated a small increase in the facility rentals revenue based on a planned adjustment of some of those rates. As well as from the adopted version, the user fees is showing is a decrease, but the two million dollar number is actually a slight increase. From what we used in the pro forma, based on making some adjustments to student activity fees. So all that being said, with the incorporation of the fund balance that really boosts that number. The revenue that we're projecting to balance the budget is the forty-one million in local revenue. For state revenue, you'll see that the there was an opportunity to vote on the. Veto override that did not materialize. So we have removed the one-time funds from the state revenue. And adjusted the foundation funding based on our projections that we've received from the demographer. Which also is a slight reduction to the quality schools grant with all other state revenues remaining the same. For a total reduction of that thirty-two million. And then for our federal revenue, based on our actual submission for the application numbers in this go around. We are projecting an increase over what we used in the pro forma of the federal impact aid. That's reflected here as is a small adjustment up from the for the reimbursement for our ROTC instructors. But that number was the same as we used in the pro forma as well as the Medicaid reimbursement. So that provides us with a total general fund revenue increase of about ten million dollars under two percent.
Okay, and then we just kind of want to highlight how the local taxes and state revenue has changed since two thousand seventeen as we're tying that to our BSA number. As that year, the fiscal year seventeen, you can see Anchorage property values have gone up by sixteen percent. Over that time period, which makes our required local contribution also go up by sixteen percent. Which equates to almost seventeen million dollars. Our additional local contribution will go down by two point eight million. That's because of lower enrollment and lower and that's tied to state funding. So as that state funding goes down, so does our our city's ability to provide additional local contributions. And then in transportation, we've added nine million into FY twenty-five to balance the budget. Where in FY seventeen, it was fully supportive by the state. And then you can see our state foundation revenue going down by twenty-seven million. Part of that's going to be enrollment related and part of it's going to be related, the seven, part of it's the seventeen million from the required local contribution. We should note, you know, as we're talking about that, that our ADM is also going down. So, you know, it's gone down by almost eleven percent or a little over ten percent over the last eight years or so as well. So we put this chart in to kind of highlight where our money comes from by student. So you have the ADM since fifteen to twenty-five for the last ten years. And then how much we provided in local revenue per student, state revenue per student and federal. State revenue has gone down by about the, or it's about the same as it was in fifteen, some years higher, some years lower. Really what kind of affects that too is the number of intensive need students we have and the number of correspondences. We don't get. Exact amount of numbers. So it's not really an apples to apples comparison with, but if we could. Probably at some point, I'd like to do a presentation and pull those numbers out to see what the actual amount per student is per per non-intensive, per non-correspondent student. But the federal revenue has gone down, the local revenue has gone up predominantly is a requirement of the required local contribution. Oh, I should note that the FY twenty-five for the local revenue does not include. About sixteen hundred and sixty-nine dollars per student of fund balance. So if we were just divide the forty-two thousand ADM into the seven or seventy-one million, we're going to use, it's about almost seventeen hundred dollars per student. But on comparative, these are actual numbers. So as a comparison, we don't book fund balance as an actual revenue source. So to keep that consistent throughout the years, we've excluded the fund balance.
Um, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, sort of a clarifying question on the this per pupil fun balance. So here you're factoring. Fun balance in terms of local revenue and that sixteen nine sixteen sixty-nine figure is. Different than the sort of.
The nine.
Nine eighty-nine figure on this chart and that would be sort of like.
The BSA equivalents are done after adjustments through the the foundation formula. So this forty-two thousand six hundred students turns into about seventy-two thousand for a BSA equivalent. So a seventy-one million divided into the seventy-two thousand adjusted ADM gets to a BSA equivalent number of. Nine hundred and eighty-nine, whereas an actual just per student amount is closer to seventeen hundred.
Okay, so just different ways of measuring the same pot of money.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good question. Any other questions? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Minister President. Going back to the previous slide on the local and state revenue. Am I reading it correctly that between FY seventeen and FY twenty-five, local taxpayers. Are being asked to pay over sixteen million more towards ASD's budget while the state's been asked to pay. Twenty-seven million less. Or am I. Stressing those numbers?
It'd be twenty-three million for the local. So you'd want to add in the required local, the additional and the transportation.
So local taxpayers are being asked to to pay roughly twenty-three million more, even though our state funding hasn't. Increased through a BSA increase, but it has gone down based on our ADM totals.
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, part of it's ADM, part of it's the required locals, so seventeen million of that twenty-seven would be. The required local contribution being pushed through that way and the rest would be based on enrollment decreases.
Thank you. Could you explain again the nine million for transportation?
Right, so transportation historically was a reimbursable thing up until sometime in the early mid two thousand ten. I forget, I forget when they changed it and then they put it into a per pupil amount, which is four hundred and eighty-one dollars. And they, I think that was, they set that rate back in like two thousand thirteen or fourteen or something lower than that. And it had a inflationary adjustment up until FY fifteen sixteen, which it ended at four hundred and sixty-one dollars and that's where it's still at. So we haven't had a transportation adjustment since two thousand fifteen sixteen, when it was fully supported by the state. But over time, as we've had less state contributions into the fund, as our AD, as our enrollment goes down, so does our state funding at that four hundred and eighty-one dollars. As well. So the transport, so our local government, the municipality has been able to kick in some money to help shore up that transportation program. For next year, we anticipate that being about nine million dollars. Yeah, that's local taxes that are supporting transportation.
Okay, you done, member Don? Okay, member lessons. But just to be clear, it's a great question, member Don Lee. With the transported, the nine million dollars from local funding that we're directing to transportation. If the state had adjusted people transportation. Would we be able in a perfect world or a more perfect world to redirect that nine million dollars towards operations towards, let's say, class sizes?
No, because the city is at the local cap between the required local and the additional local maximum, which they're contributing the local now. The the mac, the maximum they can and then transportation right currently is set aside outside of that maximum local. But until the state revenue starts increasing them, the additional local contribution the city can put in won't increase either. So that's kind of one of the questions we give is why are my taxes going up when you guys taxes keep going up, but you keep asking for more money? Because when they go up, the state revenue goes down and we have the same amount of money for the most part.
Other questions right now? All right, let's continue.
Okay, so that's our revenue picture that we have outlook for next year and now I'll get into some of the expenditures. As Dr. Bryant mentioned, we have a, we will have a PTR increase of plus one at grades four through twelve. We did cut a lot of things. There were more stuff or. Holdback positions or anything we can get to avoid increasing that, but there really wasn't a way around it. So we just tried to minimize the impact of PTR adjustments as best we could with the money we had. And we're able to limit that. So. It's not going to limit all the elementary school reductions based on PTR, but it'll eliminate some of those. So here's the school-based changes. I would, first off, I'd just kind of like to go over that. It's important to note that this isn't going to match the appendix C, which really shows the detailed amount by organization or by. By expenditure type. What this is going to show is more reflection of what's going to be changed in schools. So this is going to see. Where schools see a reduction in services, reduction personnel stuff. There'll be other things in there and a good example is AMCS, you'll see contracted services drop by about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's just tied to how much we've been paying UAA for tuition. It doesn't change the classes they can take. It doesn't change anybody's student experience. It's just trying to right-size our budget to what we've actually spent. And there's other categories, several other categories like that where you'll see like addenda changing or added days. But it's really not anything that schools will see a any change in the level of service. But upfront, I mean, here's the reductions we made. Elementary immersion teachers, we're going to, planning on reduce or proposing to reduce by five. In the FY twenty-four budget, we have twelve FTE outside of the PTR metrics at the seven elementary schools that host immersion programs. We're proposing reducing that to by five. So each school have one, still have one extra. FT, teaching FTE above what the PTR metrics are for the immersion schools. We did the same thing at Rogers Park. We added one to them as well, which is kind of rolled in with this other programmatic changes. We did increase PTR by. Or the the increase of grade by one to grades four through twelve resulted in thirty-six FTE reduction. And we'll get through where those fall as far as. What grade level or what school levels those are at. On the next slide, but these are just the high level. Just purely based on enrollment, we lost about, we reduced about thirty-five teaching FCE. Most of that enrollment was declined this year. So fewer students came back this year than we projected and now we're trying to catch up for next year. Which is again, expected to reduce a few more students. We reduced ten teaching holdback positions and these are typically assigned to. If we have classroom bubbles where we receive high class sizes in the fall and we need to address a classroom of forty or something. We can assign a holdback teacher or change scheduling conflicts in secondary schools. Currently, we have thirty-one FTE assigned to holdback. This will cut us down to twenty-one FTE. It'll reduce our flexibility. But it's make our staffing easier and not have to displace as many people if we were to just assign that PTR. We have school-based supply reductions. We took a ten percent across the board cut to school supplies. If you look at the school supply, just the line item there, it'll be much bigger than that. Some of this is an inclusive of how much we plan to. We will spend less just purely based on enrollment because we do a per student allocation. But after we apply the enrollment adjustment, we applied another ten percent reduction to school supplies. And as well as supplies across all departments. So it's not just schools. It's going to be the entire district that feels pressure from the reduced supplies. The middle school staff to support the sixth graders coming in from elementary schools. We added four assistant principals, seven counselors. An extra hour of work for a library assistant at West Romey. Couple of office admin and five security. Later on, we'll get to, you can see what specifically schools were receiving these extra staff. Fine arts as we transitioned sixth grade band and orchestra from elementary schools to middle schools. Believe we can save about four point seven FTE there. Right now, I think we have fourteen, a little over fourteen FTE assigned to middle or elementary band and orchestra. And we'll be able to push another ten or so, save about ten or the. Save five of those and push the rest of them into middle schools. Others enrollment based changes are really these metrics based or programmatic changes that we have in other categories. By and large, these are kindergarten paraprofessionals. And we'll show you where these are, not necessarily the kindergarten because we don't have enough space for the elementary schools. But our metric for elementary schools and kindergarten classroom is one, three and a half hour paraprofessional person per classroom. And then that person can work another two hours as noon duty. So we don't expect schools to really see any change in the level of service. If they have that kindergarten classroom, they're going to have a TA in there or a paraprofessional. Other changes, we added some intervention coaches. That was a holdover at McLaughlin from the step-up program that used to be state funded through the DOJ. And now it is, you know, it'll be through the general fund. Charter schools, they added twenty-one FTE. Some of them were new ads, but a lot of these were pulled in from Esser money as well. So as they charter schools also paid for staffing through Esser, just like the district did with their hundred and sixty-four FTE. They also used a lot of fund balances here. So they have about one point six million set aside to help support their operations. So just like the district, they're spending down their savings to be able to support ongoing operations. So is there any questions on these school-based changes before we? Move into like some of the specifics of it?
Number lessons. Yeah, so at some point in the future, it might be interesting or helpful to understand what the charter schools fund balances are. Just as we talk to people around the community and if there's a downward line, like that's important to know that that the BSA. Increase would else is going to lift all boats, right? How is that going to help our charter schools as well? And then hopefully I can phrase this the way I think I'd like to phrase it. So the the first item here is on elementary immersion teachers. Some number of months ago, we received emails about one or more teachers who were at. One or more immersion schools and they had visas that were expiring, right? These are, you know, they're teaching in a language. It's. Maybe hard to find that particular language, you know, native speaker here in Anchorage in Alaska. So I'm wondering. If that's, if that holds true for. Many, the majority, I mean, some, all of our immersion teachers and, you know, if removing them. Is going to be complicated. Like they're not as maybe. Interchange, I know that there's like when teachers are displaced after the budget is passed, there's, you know, school-based seniority. But if you are displacing people who are here because they're on visas. I guess, will we be displacing people who are teaching in immersion programs and they're here on visas? I feel like I'm not able to articulate this question entirely well, because I am not a subject matter expert, but I just, I know that we've received emails. I know that it's complicated and I just wonder if the immersion program reduction is going to be harder than it looks.
Yeah, and I I get where you're going with it, but I do not know the answer to whether they have like. Provisional certifications just to do this thing. Maybe Marty has that answer or. Brandon's here.
It's a good question. I'd want to go back and meet with the talent management team and get a more nuanced answer. But if they were displaced from that position, we would first look for another position. In the span, you know, in the immersion program for which they taught another opening that they might be able to go into. Maybe at a different divisional level, if their certification supported that. If we got to the point where there was no teaching position available for them that lined up with their visa. Then, you know, we would, we would have to problem solve that with that individual is my understanding.
I guess that's as good of an answer as I can ask for at this point in time. Thank you.
And with respect to the charter schools fund balances, we do publish those in our financial report. So if you go to our act for it, it's in the somewhere in the last couple of pages of that. We do have a table for the ten-year history of their fund balances. So what that looks like as far as some of these changes.
I'm sorry, member Wilson does have a question. She's online. Member Wilson?
I just had a quick question. You had mentioned their DOJ used to pay for. Was it an FTE at McLaughlin? Can you tell, can you repeat what you had said? I kind of missed that.
There was two intervention coaches that used to be funded by a step-up grant that were at McLaughlin. That went away in twenty-three. We added them back just through some holdback positions or unallocated funds for FY twenty-four. As it was kind of a last minute thing carrying over and then in FY twenty-five, we're finally adding those to the budget. So those positions have existed for years. They currently exist. We're getting, we're catching the budget up to them now. The other thing I kind of wanted to go back to also on this slide was the programmatic FTE changes. Most of that's at our alternative schools. As stellar has added a sixth grade, we've added staff for that. SAVE has changed some of their. Practices about what classes they're offering instead of just doing half-days, they're now doing full-day classes. We've added some staff there. And then we've restructured the way. And then we've restructured the way Alaska Choice and Alaska Virtual have their staffing. So you will see like a counselor and a teaching expert coming out of Alaska AK Virtual, and we're just moving those into teaching staff. So this is reflective also of the two incoming staff, which is kind of also included in that other school-based enrollment staffing change, like that minus .5 counselors. That's a net change between one reduction at South, the one reduction at AK Virtual, and then a one-and-a-half increase at elementary schools. So we are still trying to get our elementary schools up to having a halftime counselor at least per school.
So I was looking at the metrics and the council, the sort of the counselors per students. And I guess number one, are we projecting increased enrollment sort of like at a high level in our high schools next year from, from this year? Like some of the numbers look like they were going up, so.
A little bit, yeah. They went up by a little bit, and I think that'll, as we move on the next slide, we'll have like the enrollment-based changes, like we increased 2.4 FTE at our high schools overall, just based on enrollment.
Okay. And then the related question, and then I, so I just started looking at the schools. A number of them are below that 1 to 300 ratio, which I think is, is great. But it looked like Chugiak Service and South are all over sort of 1 to 300 in like the teens and mid twenties. And I just wonder if, if we were to allocate in a better world, and like, can you, could we allocate an additional half counselor, half position to those schools to bring their numbers down into the 280s as well?
Is that on the, one of the next slides?
You know, that was, sorry, it was in the budget in the first pull-out section when.
I think we'll get, that's in action, this presentation as well, so we'll get to it, we can look at it.
Okay, you said counselors in that. I wanted to check the box and ask my question.
And President?
Yes, Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you. A question will run the, the school-based slides regarding supplies. I don't imagine this is a line item where we have significant surplus every year. And so what is the surplus if there isn't any every year? And do we think, or do we anticipate outside of a a reduction in use based on a relatively small change of enrollment? What impact will that have for educators and support staff?
That's a good question. There is a good chunk of money left over in teaching supplies and other school-based discretionary money each year. It's more so frankly at the Title I schools that they don't spend all the monies. They have some Title I money. But there's other schools that spend it down to the penny. It's like school-specific. So if there's savings in some and others, they will spend every penny you give them. As far as the services, I think all the schools, the ones that typically aren't spending all of it may not see any change in service. But the ones that are spending every penny, they're, they're definitely going to feel it. Or the ones that don't have as much community support or PTA is fundraising for them. But yeah, that's what that one's really kind of hit and miss, and we can go back and see what those, the actual, and spend it is, I don't have in front of me, but
we get a couple of practical examples of what that means for the Title I schools, or sorry, it'd be the non-Title I schools that don't spend every penny. So if a school currently utilizes their entire allotment of funding for supplies, what won't they be able to do with 10% less?
Mr. Viste, do you have, you're probably closer connected to the, an elementary school than I would be.
This is Eric Viste, Senior Director for Elementary. So like a 10% reduction with Title I schools, non-Title I schools. I mean, you'd see anything from teaching supplies, materials, paper, looking at how you do things differently in the office, from access for art, art supplies, things of that nature across your school. It really depends on the school in particular, but we could follow up and get you some more information if that was of interest.
Just a follow-up comment, and I appreciate that. More information would be helpful. Maybe, maybe we need to get creative with the schools that don't allocate all their funding, ensuring that the schools don't have to go without, but it strikes me that just because we reduce it at a budget level, 10%, won't eliminate the need. And so my concern is that someone's going to be paying for it that isn't out of a district account, and that's going to be teachers and support staff, and that can't become acceptable. Thank you.
Member Higgins, did you, I see your mic sun.
Thank you. I just want to go back to the middle school, make sure I understand exactly what's going on there, because I know that we talked about if eliminated the middle school, it would save 3-point-something million dollars, 3.6 something. But if we didn't move the sixth graders in there, that would reduce it to only 2.4 savings, which I assume would be less expensive than in the, in the elementary than it is the middle school. And I see a number of pluses and negatives in here, and trying to come out with the net is getting a little difficult for me. When we did the middle school, we focused on, you know, I think maybe the discussion is what's going to do for elementary in the future and how we're going to be able to combine it, because the studies, you know, nationally shows that it's not good academically. But I'm wondering, one, is there any funding in here to try to address the academic impact for those kids that are struggling socially, emotionally learning, and they're going to be put into a sixth-grade environment next year? Do we have, is there funding or some source in here that's, that's intended to help address that academic problem for those kids? I don't, I don't see that. I don't know how that's being added. I don't know what that pros and cons are, but that's my big concern right now. We're timing to move forward with the middle school. We got some pushback from the public in regards to that in any way. And it's gonna, I don't know how, what step we're at at this point, but it's going to cost us more. And, and academically, it's not positive to study nationally. And I'm just wondering, one of the things I raised last time when we did is, what can, what are we going to do budget-wise or otherwise to help the kids that's going to come out behind, if we're going to push it through this year? What's, what's our plan? Is that a financial issue that's been considered?
Right. And I don't know that I can speak to the actual educational structure of it so much, but I would like to address the the savings that you talked about, the 3.8 million. But that was based on removing the middle school model, which we didn't do. So as we've kept the middle school model, if we move the sixth graders into the middle schools and did away with the middle school model, which adds that extra period of planning time, that would save about 3.8 million, but we didn't do that in this budget. The staff represented on this for the move to middle schools is just the additional staff will need to house a third more kids at those seven programs.
And then, okay, we're going through that part. One of the presentations when it originally came up talking about doing this was that we would have some middle schools over capacity, now at least one that was presented by the advisor. It was like 110 or 116% is the figure I remember being at capacity. Is that a financial consideration? Is there some issues associated with that for being over capacity? It's going to cost us more that way as well? Or do we have some idea of the impact that's going to have while we're struggling, trying to get academic scores up, and this thing doesn't seem to be in touch with that goal? That's the reason why I'm still concerned about the sixth-grade middle school and whether or not that's, it's a good timing to do it at this point. Financially, it's going to cost us. Academically, it's going to cost us, and public is, is just really pushing at the issue.
Member Higgins, if I could speak to that briefly. One, in terms of the, the costs for the middle school model, that would be in the memo that, that's in this board packet on the costs of middle school, right? In terms of relocatables and other upgrades to make sure that it's a smooth transition. But I want to be very clear that ASD has operated with a grade six through eight model for a number of years. So we have some great best practices that I've personally seen at Clark, at Mirror Lake, that we can embed in our new middle schools that will now have sixth graders for the first time. With regards to the data, we've talked about this a number of times, but I want to be clear that the subpopulations between the middle schools with sixth graders in ASD versus the middle schools that do not have sixth graders are not comparable. So even though it may seem at first glance that academic achievement is lower at our middle schools with six through eight, I don't think that's completely, a complete picture, given the different populations served by those schools. I actually think that there are a lot of benefits with the middle school model. One, the extra time that teachers have to talk about specific cohorts of students and, and practical things that you can do as well. So for example, one, you have access to more electives and offerings, which might be exciting for students that they wouldn't have access to at their elementary school. And then two, best practice that I've seen at our current schools that operate in a six-eight model would be having our sixth graders in a dedicated wing, for example, to where you can really build that cohesion amongst the sixth graders within their building. We'll give them access to the same amenities of a middle school, but we'll also sheltering them and preparing them for that integration with their older peers. So this isn't a, a work session that will focus explicitly on middle school, but these are things we'd be happy to talk about, and we have talked about. But we came to the decision that we did because we felt overall this would fit on our path to improving academic outcomes.
Not seeing any more questions. Oh, Member Halloman.
Sometimes I feel like we're in a parallel universe where we're talking about a really ambitious project over the next few years. But there's no mention about how this impacts our pathways, our career pathways program. I just wondered, was there never a fiscal note for this coming year, which I realize is not the one that has the biggest impact? Is, is that program unaffected by, by what we're looking at in this budget? Is kind of the first question. I may save the second question for a couple of months.
Yeah, I think a lot of the, the money that we're going to put towards developing those CCL pathways are going to be in that federal grant we got. So that'll be part of it. We didn't really make any significant adjustments in the general fund budget to account for it, really kind of developing what that need is. So until we really have that identified need of what might need hat change in the buildings, we couldn't build it into our budget quite yet. But they're diligently working on that, and I'm sure we'll get that request coming up pretty soon.
Do we know that there's not an FTE adjustment for this fall in order to have that program?
I believe they do have academy coaches funded through the grant, so they are going to have additional staff at the, through the, at the schools to do it. But you know, the overall PTR reductions may make that, that puts some strain on it as well.
Thank you.
All right, let's continue.
All right, look at the time here. So moving through the rest of this, this is kind of the breakdown of those school-based changes for the FTE. Moving the sixth graders to middle schools. We ended up increasing the middle school allocations by 82.4, and then decreased the elementary school allocations by 84. So almost a wash when you talk about moving the, the number of teachers, even though they have different PTRs, they also have different planning time, and that's really makes it pretty comparable. The enrollment-based changes really hit elementary hardest, because that's where we saw the most decrease in the number of students. So 35 FTE at elementaries, three at middle, and an increase of 2.4 at high schools. The alternative schools, I discussed a little bit with, with perspective changes at SAVE and Stellar and some of our other alternative programs. And then the PTR increase is going to result in eight-and-a-half FTE loss at elementary, 9.8 at middle, 14.2 at high schools, and 3.8 FTE at alternative schools, after we applied some of those other adjustments.
Can I ask a question? The, the alternative school, you said increasing, is going to increase 11 FTE? And that would be like, I know you said Stellar because they're adding sixth graders. Do we know, do we know?
It's predominantly in SAVE, Stellar, Alaska Choice and Alaska Virtual. Family Partnership reduced a couple, and there's a couple other small change, I think, one at King Tech.
But it'll be distributed among those, I mean, divided among those, okay?
Just a snapshot of our elementary school allocations. Again, librarian, nurse, two office admin and a BPO are our standard at every elementary school, as well as the paraprofessionals of three-and-a-half-hour in each classroom. Again, increase the PTR, grades four and above. The language immersion and Rogers Park FTE are listed here, and then move in the sixth graders. As far as the middle schools, here's where those 18 FTE fall by school. And note, Handshoe, Mears, Romey, and Goldenview will now be about the four largest middle schools in the state. And then adding counselors in there, and then the office admin ended up reducing a little bit at Clark and Baggage as their populations have declined. And now they're all fairly comparable based on the population. And then we've increased the security presence at those schools as well. High schools, really no significant change. That .6 there is also because of the West Romey sharing a paraprofessional or a library assistant at, working an extra hour. And so this one, I believe we had the, when Member Lessons was discussing, the counselors at 300 to one. The way that's, I think, which school were you looking at that you had a question on the metric?
Well, yeah, I mean, I just, unless I did things wrong, it looked like Bartlett, Diamond, East, West, and Eagle River are all below that 300 ratio, which is great. Chugiak Service and South, though, were above, and it just, if we added like a half to each of them, we could bring them all below the 300.
Right. And the way the metric actually works is it takes the number of students divided into 300, then it'll round it. So up until, you know, if they're at 1,500 students and they have five counselors for that, they would have to get up to 1,650 to trigger another one in the metric. So it's more just where that rounding occurs in the formulas.
Do these numbers take into account the reduced enrollment?
Yes, so these are based on our projections for next year. Here's the alternative school changes. Again, it's like the one at ASD, or the counselor and other staff at ASD Virtual that went to into their teaching allocations. So this was a programmatic change they wanted to make to help just facilitate how they do business. And then you see the McLaughlin changes as well. The other changes at AK Choice were more just based on a staff that wanted to reduce an hour in office admin. And then we cut a finance technician between, that was shared between AK Choice, Family Partnership, and Frontier. We're trying to change some of our business practice to become more efficient in there, so it's another position we've cut out of accounting, not necessarily reflected in the accounting department, but it is one less person over there.
So King Tech and AMCS share the same building, but they're listed here separately?
Right, they have separate account codes, structures, and, but they are managed by the same principal, and they're co-located.
So there will be two, at the actual school, there'll be two principals, three counselors, no librarian, no library assistant, no nurse?
There's one nurse at King Tech.
Oh, at King Tech that serve both, okay.
Right, so going into our special service changes, we are adding Medicaid billing supervisor to help try to start increasing some of our Medicaid revenues and get that process shored up a little bit. Deaf and hard of hearing, the change, like slight changes in their program. Note a slight error on there where it says minus .013 interpreter should be .13. So it's like an hour change or something, not a, financially not a big deal, but it's just on the presentation, I, I got it wrong. The gifted program, you've heard some feedback about the Ignite teachers. We're, on the next slide, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Viste, and he's going to go through how we're going to address those populations. But it would reduce, result in a decrease of 18 staff overall. So it'd be the 20 teachers, then turn two of them into teaching experts for a STEAM model, which Eric will get into in a minute.
Just, just a minute. Board members, I'd like to propose that we continue this until 5:30? Any objections to continuing that session? Not seeing none. We will go until 5:30. Thank you.
So I'll move it along quickly then. So the Whaley staffing changed a little bit. The one assistant principal moved over into mental health. CLC in addition there, been an assistant director, just changing what that, that job function is. Most of the time, they probably will be at Whaley, but then they'll be doing summer work and things as well. Special education, our preschool special ed changed a little bit overall. They reduce some. Just just fractional there, add an outreach counselor to or a counselor to outreach. The ACT program nurse have reduced five point five. And then the special education holdback positions. Those were the positions we had trouble filling. Just like most of our others, or a lot of our other special education positions, these just went vacant all year. So as a matter to similar to our other holdback positions, we're going to reduce those to try to avoid any further displacements. ELL changed their staffing a little bit, reduced two teachers and added a counselor. And then you'll see slight changes in special services, the added duty and a decrease in service supplies and equipment, which would be that. Ten percent across the board reduction. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Visti to go through the STEAM model.
Madam President, before we go, last question.
Question?
Yeah, thank you. On that slide. Mr. R. Liff, the Medicaid billing supervisor position, do we have any goal or estimate? As to what billables we can begin receiving by adding that position?
I don't have that estimate. The last couple of years, we haven't been meeting our revenue targets for it. So we didn't, you do, you'll notice we didn't change our revenue on our Medicaid side or their revenue. For Medicaid, so we're hoping we give, this will help us increase it back up to where we think it should be. But as far as how much, I don't really have that. We can work on it. But it'll be. Probably some time.
Who's doing that work now?
We have a couple of people in our Medicaid.
So it's split among several people.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of.
There's one, my understanding is there's one FTE for the entire district to do that billing. And and recruitment. And I guess what I would say from experience in other districts is that a district this size is significantly under recovering Medicaid. Billable reimbursement. So I suspect that. Adding this, this position will well exceed the cost. Probably exponentially would be my guess, once it's up and running to have two FTEs be able to support. That.
Just a quick follow up. The last time we talked about this, I think, was in a summer work session, potentially with the assembly, one of our joint meetings. But I've heard anecdotally that we're potentially under collecting millions of dollars in services we could build for. Is that still generally accurate? Do we have a? An estimate as to what we're missing out on?
I don't think we have an estimate of that. There's a lot of moving parts and the Medicaid program has changed in years. It also, just to clarify, is a cost share with the state. So in order to be set up as a school based, to provide school based Medicaid billable services, there is a cost share we do. So we split that revenue with them. But we could pull together some numbers and and provide that to the board.
Thank you. Member Lessons?
This is maybe a follow up, but I feel like we received in Board Connect a few months ago, kind of a write up of. Policy changes that need to take place at the state level in order for us to truly re. Be more effective at recouping some of the Medicaid billing. Like three, four months ago.
Again, I'm Eric Visti, the Senior Director for Elementary Ed. So when we're, when we're talking about Ignite and the elimination of Ignite. One of the things we talked about and had in reflection of it with was. How do we still enrich and how do we provide opportunities and access for advanced learners to still explore units of study? In a, in an applied way. And so from that, some discussions were had and. Looking at practices that we already have existing in our district, but maybe not universally. We looked at a STEAM model. And so a STEAM model stands for science, technology, engineering, the arts and mathematics. And one of the things that the district's proposing is looking at a reimagining. Of our art, health and science delivery into a STEAM model at elementary schools to provide greater access for all students across the Anchorage School District. Including students who are advanced learning. The STEAM model really looks at pushing. Science into a specialist model and taking art and infusing it within STEAM from the visual art side of it. We still have music, right? And then looking at how do we provide a more more robust delivery of service for students accessing that that specialist? Okay. So STEAM really integrates those activities through hands on, project based learning with using real world approach. It looks at critical thinking, problem solving, looking at our current. Today's system, looking ahead, looking at our academies of Anchorage, our CCL initiative. How do we align our program so that we're delivering a more robust, more progressive academic access for all students? It looks at scientific principles. It blends the arts into math. Engineering, science, and it takes. Those elements and puts it into visual art design and so on and so forth. So the art doesn't go away. But it becomes more fused across content areas. It also takes math. And brings math, math still would be taught within the classroom instruction. So students would still access math instruction by their classroom teacher. But math would then become across across the STEAM specialist at the elementary schools. You're using more discovery, more collaboration. Building up students so that it aligns with both our next generation science standards. But also again, comes back to where we're moving towards with our Academy of Anchorage and our local, local economies. If you look into what our student representation is, our student populations. You'll see there is a lot of disparity for our student groups across all of Anchorage. One of the things that we want to provide is a more robust access of opportunity for all students to be able to access. Our STEAM, our sciences, our standards there. And in doing so, providing the context using our multi tiered system of support. Through our wind blocks to then be able to extend and deepen the learning and opportunities for kids who are in. Advanced learning groupings at each of our elementary schools. One of the things that we'd be proposing to do, if if we can move forward with our STEAM process or STEAM proposal. Would the next step for our groups would be putting together an instruction program and put all of teachers, administrators. To be able to more further design, develop program evaluation, program goals, look at the curriculum components of it. And move forward with that group going into the the spring semester, both teaching and learning and elementary education. And then going into the summer for a launch and next fall. What would happen, what this would actually look like would be our health and art teachers. Those positions would be collapsed into a STEAM, STEAM specialist position. The STEAM specialist position would then provide the instruction weekly to all students that K through five. Health instruction would come into the classroom. So your classroom teacher would be teaching health. Science would move into the specialists infused across through the STEAM. And then art would be blended into that. What happens right now in our art and health. Models is the teachers are highly, highly itinerant. And so essentially what would happen is every school would get close to one point oh or close to. We have some schools that would be smaller and still have a shared position. So but most schools would have close to a one point oh position. And and what that would do would be eliminating all the travel, the itinerary, the efficiencies with our staffing. We provide more direct service delivery. Teachers would be in one building, having stronger relationships with kids, higher connectivity with their staff. You'd increase the program capacity at every elementary school by making this change. You'd also provide a more robust. I would say progressive education platform for all students. We wouldn't be losing the health component of it. We'd be doubling down on our science and technology and making it more infused across students and having it more hands on, applied to real world.
How does this model, this plan fit within the statutes? I mean, like this, the state statute relative to. Gifted education. Dr. Bryant, you may have.
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to it and for those tuning in, it is of the district's interest for our students' interest to ensure that we're in full compliance with all statutes and regulations related to gifted and talented education. I would refer the public and the board to. Statute fifty two point eight hundred on district responsibilities for gifted education. But essentially it's very broad and I'll be providing the board with a full legal write up for your reference. But just so we're all operating with the same requirements. A district needs to have at minimum a way to identify students for gifted education. Student eligibility criteria. A process for developing student learning plans that provides for teacher parental and student participation and a review process for parents. To ensure that their child is challenged and that their instructional learning plans are being met. And these are all things that will happen within the Anchorage School District. What we're proposing is to eliminate our current model, which is a pullout program for gifted and talented students. And reimagine it with our multi tiered systems of support structure that can be leveraged within. Within STEAM, but also other aspects of elementary education.
So we're, so we're not eliminating. Gifted or Ignite, we are redesigning it.
The this.
Or using a different model.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to clarify. So so this model would re would take the existing FTE of health and art. And and rep and redesign that, reimagine that into the STEAM positions. So that would be essentially revenue neutral of of taking those positions and changing what that would look like. The development of the program and the curriculum would be able to provide opportunities and access for students who are advanced as well as students that are. Needing remedial support or additional support in there. And that would be available for all students and then using our MTSS wind blocks to be able to extend that. And enrich that for those students that need those services.
In other words, so it's not a state requirement to have a high touch pullout program for gifted education. Under the guidance provided by state statute, we can work with deed to make sure that there's a plan that's approved and follows all laws and regulations that we will be doing. But what we are proposing is that despite this terrible financial situation that we're in is we're trying to determine how can we make the most of the resources that we have to provide a value add experience for our students that focuses on something as important as STEAM. Through the proposal that Mr. Visti described.
Okay, member Lessons?
This is maybe a reflection, a comment, sort of my own preparation for this. Four years ago, I sat in one of those blue chairs and testified against cutting health. I want to come back to that in just a minute. I wanted to, so I started thinking about when we used to have special edu, gifted education used to be. A part of special education. That was changed in around two thousand and two. And then in two thousand and sixteen, a bill removed the word gifted from state statute regarding disabilities. I think that what is currently written in statute is ineffective and really broad. That's just my personal opinion.
And it is.
But I. But I'm also, you know, acutely aware that budget shortfalls for a couple of decades have put gifted services on the chopping block again and again and again. And I am frustrated that we. May not be meeting those students' needs through a new model. I'm worried that we are already at kind of max capacity for new initiatives. And implementation of the Alaska REEDS Act. It's really hard for me to imagine staff. Working as hard as they already are working, reconceptualizing the delivery of art. And science. In a STEAM program while also figuring out how to have time in the day for. Classroom teachers to develop individual plans for their gifted students. I don't know. It just seems. Very rushed. And then on the health side. I have spent a lot of time over the fall working with the district's health specialist. To bring forward a policy which hasn't yet been reviewed, but we went through and we looked at state statute governing health education. So you have stack fourteen dot thirty dot three five five. Which says all K twelve students and educators receive sexual abuse and sexual assault awareness and prevention information. So parents are notified. Two weeks, no less than two weeks before that classes or programs provide sexual abuse and sexual assault awareness and prevention instruction to a child. So that's happening in our some somehow somewhere. Statute fourteen dot thirty dot three sixty requires districts to provide instruction in physical health and personal safety. And also receive information on alcohol, drug abuse education, CPR. Really cancer prevention and detection, dental health, family health, including infant care, environmental health, the identification and prevention of child abuse. Child abduction, neglect, sexual abuse and domestic violence. I am, and then Alaska statute fourteen dot thirty dot three sixty one. For our fifth grade students, they would receive age appropriate sex education, human reproductive reproductive education. And human sexuality education pending parent permission. That's how it works for for grade five. So. And right now I'm aware that health teachers get professional development to help implement these things. With fidelity. Where's the time going to come for classroom teachers to receive? Subject specific professional development with such a massive transformation is kind of my short question.
Yeah, thank you for the question, member Lessons. So Anchorage, Anchorage is, not all school districts have health teachers. And yet they comply with the state statutes of Alaska, right? And so one of the things that we'd be doing is we'd be working through that committee form to figure out how exactly that looks like. That is part of one of our contractual requirements to also have with ADA. And so that would be work that we'd be doing over the spring to be able to push that into the classroom. We actually have nine schools right now that are doing some way, shape or form of this. Willowa was one of the schools using Project Lead the way that led this and have been doing so for quite some time. And to my understanding, it's been doing pretty well with it. But there have been other schools over the past four years that have tried and then are using this model to provide services for students. We have more schools asking to do this right now. In fact, for next year, they're asking to. Part of the roadblocks for us to provide this, this blend of service. Is is our staffing, how we do staffing and health and art. What you have is you have half of the FTE for that that whole position. They're all, they're pretty much every staff member's itinerant. And so art teachers are itinerant with these three, say, schools. And then health teachers are itinerant with another three schools, right? And so to be able to help support schools to do some of these things. It's excessively complicated to do that. So by doing this model of STEAM, what we'd be providing the capacity. And district resources to lift that, that ask. And then what we'd be doing is still continuing to support teachers to provide health instruction and continuing to meet those state statutes that we. Bar none, that would not change. But it would look different. It would be in the classroom and with the classroom teacher. So that would change, right?
What was the conversation like with the principals and what was their? Response?
Couple asked if they could testify. They're supportive of it. The elementary principals, we met with them just a day ago. And and by and large, the the feedback that I've received, both in email and in the meeting itself, has been overwhelmingly positive. With elementary principals.
Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. What do we know about the the makeup of current participants of Ignite and? As a, I guess, a second part of that question. What would a student who hasn't tested and qualified for gifted education yet? What would, how do we anticipate this new model benefiting academic outcomes and kind of aligning with board goals?
Yeah, thanks for the question, number Jacobs. If I answer your second question first, gifted services, just to clarify, we have Ignite and we have our gifted program, right? We're not talking but our HG program at Rogers Park. That program would exist as it is, you know, using the staffing metrics that we have in the budget. What we're talking about is the Ignite service delivery pieces. That would, that's the program that would shift in terms of what would be accessible, given the reductions that are happening. Based off of our proposed budget. The demographics that we have, if you look across the district, across all grades, we have about sixteen thousand five hundred and one students. In grades two through six, because Ignite is accessed from two through six in our sixth grades and elementary. And then we have about twenty one hundred, just under twenty one hundred students accessing Ignite. If you look at our demographic groups, we have some pretty significant disproportionality within the Ignite services across our, our different ethnic groups across ASD. Groups such as our Alaska native who make up about ten percent of our population, they make up about four percent of our our Ignite population. Of the twenty one, of our twenty one hundred, yeah. And I can share, I can share the demographics with the board too separately, but. There are definitely specific. Um, there are definitely specific groups that are underrepresented. Um, you see they're underrepresentation in some of our other reports that we provide the board to. Um, our black students, um, whereas their makeup is about four percent, is down to two percent in grades two through six with ignite. Um, Hispanic population is from twelve down to nine percent. Um, native and Pacific Islander is at eight percent of of two through six and is down to two percent in ignite services. So what this model would do would also provide those type of activities and programs for all students across every school. Um, Title One schools, non-Title One schools. Um, so the the opportunity to have and participate in a type of program like this would be available for all students.
So you mentioned a project lead and I actually did see that program. Uh, very impressive at uh Willowa. And you said other schools were doing it?
Um, no other schools are using Project Lead the Way. A lot of the schools where you, we have science kits in elementary school. A lot of schools have pulled in science kits. Um, you know, in elementary, we've had computer labs or historical buildings. A lot of those computer labs have kind of gone away. Uh, we use mobile Chromebook cards. Schools have been building uh maker spaces, science labs. You see this, this trend of schools trying to do this and figuring out how they can pull that into the school. Russian Jack years ago was starting to build a space. Um, um, Ursa Minor on base is doing that. Um, the other schools are using a different model. They don't have Project Lead the Way. Um, they are using science kits and other things to build up a s- a science STEAM or STEM-type program.
You know, we we hear, well, at least I, we get emails um from parents on the value of the program for their child. Um, how do we? Because they're, they're, they're counting on that. Is it one day pullout? Where kids get to go right now, they get their ignite um instruction by pullout and it's one day a week?
It's two hours a week. And so it depends on with the twenty teachers, how they're divided up into schools. Most of the teachers have three schools and then they have to organize their time. Um, in terms of how many, providing two hours per week. So um. One school that has a high number of ignite students, uh, the ignite teacher will be there fifty percent of the time. Um, so it's really, so they're providing up to two hours, but they're divided up between three schools. So they're very itinerant. And I do want to add with the Project Lead the Way, we do have one school, but in the teaching and learning side, we're also exploring it further to see. To hear more about what they have to offer for elementary schools. Not saying that's the way we're going, but we are also.
Okay, member lessons? So, um, I feel like our ignite teachers have been through a lot this year. Um, they are also our testers for M class. They've been pulled out. My rough calculation was about fifteen percent of the time, you know, two weeks, two weeks, and two weeks. Um. I thought that would give them some job security. Um, but. What I am wondering now is if ignite goes away and s- the STEAM special. Um, sort of becomes part of that sort of curricular experience. Um. Who in the district is going to do the the M-class testing to have that sort of fidelity, if that's the right word, right, for your testing teams?
So have pulling ignite has had been a concern expressed by the board as well. So in academic services. We have been working through what what possibilities um there are so that we can support testing without the use of ignite. So whether ignite stays or goes away, we're still looking at other um avenues in terms of testing. But we're working on that at the academic services team side. So with Mr. Opitz and um, Mr. Visti. And the other members of the team.
I guess, just so is that, are you saying that some sort of central administrative team is possibly who would be deployed?
No, no, but the team is trying to figure out what other resources can we utilize, right? Because um, we want to hold up the validity of the testing. Um, so we're trying to, we, we are putting our heads together to brainstorm. What else can we do? Because we know we have to figure that out as well.
Well, we have about five minutes left. Uh, member, and we're not gonna get done, so, member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you. Um, a question on, we we mentioned we have um schools utilizing. This model right now, um, that do appreciate it. Can you speak to more why they appreciate it and if there are academic benefits that are associated with it?
To the exact, um, I wouldn't be able to give you the exact specifics of why, and I haven't exactly surveyed how they benefit. Um, so I'd have to dig in a little bit more. What I can tell you just anecdotally is they're not looking to change. They want to keep doing what they're doing with the STEAM and STEM model. Um, and just from a a kind of a perception viewpoint of if if that asks, if you will. Um, the, just the overwhelming feedback has been positive. Um, I think one of the values that you have in that in terms of master scheduling is you keep that block. And it, you know, it's based off of also connected to your teachers' um, uh, uh, planning time. And so that is a real strong, firm, dedicated block that also you feel the access and just the. Um, positivity about it has been mostly anecdotal, so I I'd have to dig in more to get you more to that.
I can add to some of the anecdote too. Um, the uh, the students that are in ignite, they get pulled out. And so inevitably they miss out on something. And they typically don't want to miss out on specials, so they miss out on reading. Or math, but they have to get pulled out of something. And then if we're talking anec- anecdotally, I. I do know that there is some data in terms of Willowa utilizing this model. It's not, um, I haven't seen it. But it discussion, um, it, they have had made some slight growth. It's growth, but not. From the underside up to the top, but they do make growth and they, and the kids are engaged. And so their model has always been um, some for all and more for some. And so the more for some in our our mind would be through that M T S S program.
But I follow.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, I appreciate that. I, I'm hopeful as we get closer to our budget adoption. We can move, the anecdotal information is certainly helpful. Um, but if. We can continue making the the case, uh, administration can continue making the cases to how this aligns with. Seven individuals up here voted for goal, work goals related to reading, math proficiency, and college career life readiness. If we can align this change with those norms, and as we get closer to our next meeting, that might be helpful.
Number Jacobs, I can, to your point there, I mean, the STEAM model would add in the math component. I mean, that's a direct. Teachers are, the math isn't going away from the classroom, so you still have your math block. What you're doing is you're actually intensifying that, right? So you're drawing math across concepts, doing the application of it into the context for students. So. Uh, to what to that point of that question, member Jacobs, you'd, you'd have a stronger program there.
So as I recall though, um, it's been a couple of years. I think it was probably right. After COVID that I saw the uh, visited Willowa and saw the Project Lead the Way. I mean, the phenomenal thing for me, which I took away and I still hold on to today, is that the opportunity for that high-level engagement. And teaching was available to all students. Um, so we are giving students what they need, but we're also providing opportunities for those who just for whatever reason. Were not identified as gifted. And I think you're absolutely correct. I had a, uh, my kids were, um, I had one that valued gifted. And the other who dreaded it because he didn't want to miss anything. And there is a trade-off. And I think it's fine. I mean, I'm not judging either way, but um. The pullout, when we pull kids out, they do miss. They gain, but they also miss. And so I don't know, I don't know what the balance is, but I do know that one of the things that I was most impressed about is that. Every kid had the opportunity to engage in those fantastic um activities. And I couldn't tell the gifted kids from the non-gifted kids, to tell you the truth. But the high level of instruction and the high level of engagement uh is still what I walk away with today, with that I remember.
Nevertheless.
One of my schools this year is Campbell STEM, and I really enjoyed my visit there. Uh, it was actually one of their special days and there was all kinds of things were flying and kids were building and creating. Um, but it impressed me that they wrap the scientific, the scientific method and inquiry. Into every day. It's not sequestered into an hour. Is that something that we can do district-wide? To, to some extent, right? Rather than saying, we're gonna do science here, right? Imbue it in all of a student's day. Or a much broader portion of the day.
I think that's something we could hope for. I mean, already we're in, we're crosswalking. Health and and science and social studies and reading curriculum, but this is like something more now. And what I really like about it, to be very honest with you, is that through line to the academies. And giving the opportunity for all our kids to be in that exploratory phase, um, to kind of dig in. To all the opportunities that are out there for them. And so when this started being discussed, that's kind of where my mind started going.
Okay, so uh, we are out of time and we are not done. Um, but we will pick up where we left off. Um, at another date and time. But thank you guys very much. Uh, I'll take a. Motion to move into executive session.
Madam President, move to uh adjourn to executive session for the purpose of contracts, um, negotiations and legal updates.
Moved in second. Any opposition to move into executive session? Seeing none? We're moving.